Hi, what do you think, everyone, and welcome to the meeting here for Monday, the twenty eighth of September twenty one. This is Carrie, which will be called Wolf.
Pam Halliday.
President.
Mister Gallo.
Here.
Mister Cole.
Here.
Mister Martin.
Here.
Mister Brandon.
Here.
Miss Ball. Here, Mister Gallo, no, sorry, Mister Menon.
Here.
I noticed that Mister Gallo is here.
Thank you, my board, thank you, state officials.
Hey, uh, we are at the public comments. Um, if you were at home, you would like to talk about this, raise your hand. Nobody raised their hand with people in the room? Seeing your hands raised, is there anybody in the room who wants to comment? I'm just gonna read the disclaimer, and if you cannot, say your name and it's just over. We've come to this part of our meeting with school committee, most members of the public. We have all speakers, just like the following. We will leave in two minutes, present our comments, and proper public remarks will not be left. Speaker then offer objective criticism to school operations and progress, concern them. The committee will not hear personal complaints about school personnel, nor those against any member of the organization. We respect any current hostility, any remarks that are inflammatory or abusive, always considered out of order, and the chairperson, individual is purely to express on that. On that basis. But there's only to request that no names are identified information from file of any student's right privacy be offered as part of. All comments are important to the committee, and they're welcome. Long as we do this, we submit a different, uh, state running conclusion. So if you want to drop that wireless mic right there.
My name is Ralph Orlando, I live in Fort William Hall Drive in New York, Portland, Massachusetts. The three, three comments I'd like to make is, one, in follow up to my comments at the last meeting, about having a second period of public comment in the middle of the meeting. So it's allow people to offer public comment on items discussed. A couple of people from the local neighborhoods that responded to the end, but make sure that that is something that should be considered for main decisions. The second thing I'd like to call attention to, you know, I'm a relative newcomer coming around this time now, having been here years past. Uh, there's a base math policy that's now for a second presentation. Uh, I've had the last meeting and this one, I hope someone's gonna read it, so not things, and obviously what that is before you actually take a poll on, it gets important for the public to know. And the last thing I want to bring everyone's attention to is school councils. I know there are a lot of parents out there that really wish to have something to say and be heard and have impact. Uh, it appears that school committee meetings are not the place to do that, because of the time. Uh, school councils are mandated by law, I guess, school committee, uh, someone notifying in writing on what day it is, because I searched the last few days for the upcoming first school council meetings which are due uh, within forty days, the first day of school. School councils, for those of you who don't know, are mandated by law. They are public meetings, uh, they, the council are elected, uh, with students, teachers, and parents. I think it's a good form for parents who really wish to have an impact on the individual school. To send those meetings where they are heard, and recommendations dealing with each individual's school budget. Uh, school improvement plan are actually discussed, verbalized, and then our, the school committee is legally not to read through. So there's a separate way there, in which that you can, as parents, have something to say about how school.
Again, is there any more public comment? Seeing none, we're gonna close the public comment section of the meeting. On that, for consent agenda, and we're gonna do this a little bit differently than in the past. Um, Mister Cole is gonna read the warrants, and then I'm gonna ask about the three sets of minutes, and then we'll take one vote on the entire umbrella of the consent agenda. Would you go?
Sure.
We have one hundred and eighty warrants tonight. I think it's one day bills. I think it's discussion on the entire, so sorry, it's gonna be, the motion is gonna be motion for all of the warrants. Uh, so we have the minutes from meetings of eight, twelve, eighteen, nine, seven, in here. Uh, the motions for warrants to see red and the minutes to impact, uh, you know, for a second? Okay, well, we'll see how this one goes. Uh, so is this discussion on the warrants or the minutes for this package?
Yeah.
Okay.
One warrant, yeah, and I got the total on my number.
There's two warrants. That's fine, we said the, I know that making that part of the. Well, Ben Collins coming up on Thursday, if you talk about how you wanna do that. Other than those suggestions, if there is discussion on the minutes for the warrants. Yeah, all of them favor? I agree, any opposed? No. On that, the policy subcommittees, uh, second reading, base coverings policy, E B C F A, we love to do the following.
Yes, this policy was adopted following the Massachusetts Association of School Committees September. And basically is requiring that all people within school buildings and on school transportation wear masks. And except for when they are being masked for eating and can be socially distanced. So this also includes being outside if they cannot be socially distanced. Um, and this mask mandate would be, I think that's over the same. We gotta change one part of the language, which was in the beginning, it's COVID specific, and we just changed it to parental. So it's just an after square. This is also included in the meeting packet, if anybody's.
All four are gonna be right in your face, and as far as I know, sports, uh, by what masks? More than outdoors. Getting away from that policy.
Um, I don't know, I think right now, uh, both sides, the masks are not required, they're optional, and students wanna wear masks on the side.
I'm just wondering about why it was said, unless it was social distancing, which they're not. I don't even wanna do another, uh, could we get a leave with us, could be possible scenario, or or then see how the part of them goes.
But I think this is during, during the school day, so, you know, at recess and uh, physical education classes, anything outside is mask optional, so some to, you wear masks, I would choose by the monitor.
It actually says that very physical education classes are all outside, but not required.
That's right.
Uh, do you have a motion to approve this policy then? Oh, yes, I. All of them favor? I have it. They vote. Here, none, the policy. So, uh, there's any changes to sports made this year, like they were last year, or the sports back to where they need to be like the former days, and that sort of stuff?
Yeah, there's no changes, so that, back to normal, there are changes, as you may know, while it's all in your inside. With the mask, meaning that, uh, anything outside is mask optional, and restaurants should not detail, continue the mask outside, but maybe even outside of, uh.
Alright, uh, next on the agenda would be school committee self evaluation, uh, I'll read this, um, intro here. The following report summarizes the results of the new reports, school committee end cycle self evaluation, twenty twenty and twenty one academic. The evaluation with thirty one questions, with a long periods of focus. Operations, meetings, goal setting and monitoring, budget, policy, personnel, law, and community engagement. For each question, respondents were prompted to categorize the school committee's practice as embedded, stable, well developed, developing, or underdeveloped. We have a report with consolidated results, charts, as well as individual anonymized comments for each question. With one of the school members not required to buy the comments. Um, so basically, everybody here in the committee did this, um, the color chart for embedded is a single blue. Well, that was red, developing was orange, and underdeveloped was green, and my calculations were correct. We only have four, um, underdeveloped, which is the sign for the committee as a whole. Uh, most of the answers were the red, well developed, thirty one. Um, the developing was twenty one, and then the embedded simple type three of thirty one questions. Um, I don't think we need to go over the entire report, uh, there are all the comments, but you've seen, just so people know, uh, they're color coded just to separate them on page, but one color doesn't necessarily belong to a specific number, because some people only answered certain questions, so maybe the comments were like four colors, and they'll loop back around again. And honestly, it was a spot talent in my prime, so I'm gonna maybe choose those and that one. Um, so, I don't know, is there anybody who would like to discuss any comments right now, or have any other comments about the the, like, the way it was run, uh, form used, math, or anything else?
I think I'm just gonna say that to address any that requires a bit of a change in the way our games are run. Some of this requires, like, work and discussion on our part. Something we tend to do, so they can work together, adjust um, on whether you do that. We provide a place to do that. Um, we're gonna address, in last year, we wrote goals in policy. At some point, we have to talk about we need to make sure that we're following our rules, that we're checking in on our goals. That's not necessarily a policy thing, that's a committee as a whole thing. I think there's, there's, like I said, easier reflection, which, you know, that's literally going to address what's the work that's required to the games, that if I say, if I went, I don't mean like, oh, we do it now, go both, but like, actually, like, when I need these part of meetings where we dedicate time to discussion about certain things.
Uh, yeah, I agree, um, specifically the hot warnings, it's, uh, coming up, uh, two months, that would be for four people, um. I would forget the policy, have that in there. And, okay, we, we talked about everybody's study wrongs rules. You know, each of the subcommittee heads talks about what their things does. Oh, think on, so on, um, to the new people, uh, that's gonna be written down, and we have that actual, hey, this is not the only Thursday.
We have to be, like, policy on it.
You have a policy on it, or you're gonna? Doesn't have any steps of it? I think it'd be better to split it up, I mean, the mayor's, mayor. Stuff in any chairs, actually, run those handles. Hi, this is the judge, um, maybe also any more thoughts? Is that?
Yeah. I wanted to comment to the comment that I made, and to the to superintendent evaluation, that is, there were several items here that were not, were not set in fifth. And I think that was an evaluation of the public comments. No, no, I'm talking about you know, collecting part, you have to say, this is responsible, so we do pretty lucky part of the, the responsible group, in the information, in that session, it's not a relationship group. So I, I don't understand why somebody would not let question about the home, or and the, the reason that I'm running on it is that it really doesn't give us full and understanding of what people do or do not. For the school. And that feedback, I think, was very important, very, very difficult process. One, every thought, um, like I said, I don't understand for the people, they wanna answer those questions without and they're not answering, not the school. Again, that's already that.
Um, yeah, I mean, I can go back through again and make sure, but it would have been typo, but I'm, it's only those two, uh, one employer relations, um. And Mary, you have a use of that over here. Alright, so at the end of the day, though, I, I think, the public party is, at the very least, five, six things were embedded in the same. Um, personally, while I get to hear something in session. I didn't part of it, so I don't, other than hearing the story that happened. It's really apart, I mean, the two, uh, second, I need to be in that whole series of arguing, which is fine, um. But yeah, I go back in the window, but I don't think it's, that's, it's like, like, twenty minutes, um. But sure, I mean, the, 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 there's no way it's just for three, which is, uh, not working at all, basically. Um, should we talk about that? Um, we're gonna do it again, right, so, um. You know, to see if we're gonna go in, and make sure every question is answered by everyone. So, what are you getting, you said? The word of the questions, I thought there were one, um, sorry, I'm gonna try and talk about, oh, the payroll sign, again, doesn't really matter who is doing, but now, in the four years I've been here, voting, and that's in our policy, and so the mayor one day that we're gonna have this as a policy, we should follow policy, or give it, or change. So how the vice chair and payroll timing to come, yeah, our policy book is, we vote on it at the beginning of the calendar year, and we do vice chair for us, but I haven't voted on the payroll. Um, and I think, uh, Mary, your explanation was maybe just to call being the head, which is often, you know, are we just making that policy, who does that, uh, or there doesn't be, um. But no, I mean, I found a couple of things that didn't, I didn't think we actually did, but some of the comments said we did them, uh, and I just think it's probably, or kind of on the, wait, four years. Um, and you just go through that, I know that, like, the candidate who's here, the policy was totally revamped, it's, it's world better than what before. Uh, but there's still much in there. How do you know you're doing every policy, it's still written, unless it comes up on the record? You know?
I, I would just say that, yes, policy, I know, a year and a half, so we tried to start off, like, going through, or just to look for, and to see if they're not following, if it's, if that there. It takes the words that the people like to look for. It might, it might give the committee in the future to have a second piece of the policy, credit, that instead of reading on each and policy actions, that it is, it's a long, it's a policy. I know, you know, the former policy chair used to have Saturday morning meetings for three and a half, four hours. They were like, they're all.
He did make a V K S.
He did make a V K S. So it's not, it's not, just a possession. There are a lot of things that, you know, we talked about, we clearly talked about, that it is. But the superintendent, he puts us all, finds the policies itself, so people in that, at least, how they can work, two years ago, um, but that's just not that.
Now, I have a second comment, by the way, uh, one of the one of the divisions I noticed in the narratives was cloud with philosophical, and that's the level of update quarterback than the school committee, or the back and forth between the school committee and the school partners. Um, clearly, some people think it's healthier than other people do. And so, I, I will, I'm not gonna be there, but maybe a retreat in the upcoming future. Somebody will be able to kind of work out what that looks like, that has to be more savvy about uh, fieldball conversations, so it doesn't feel as aggressive and native as some people seem to have, you know? And with this, the question of all the comments that when members will be honest to me about orders, aren't they, they're aggressive, and how to find them, sort of thing. Those people thought it was great if you did that. Maybe somehow it worked that out, philosophical.
Uh, any other comments? Uh, alright, moving on, vote there.
First of all, like I said, when we all, like, you know, how different, I thought, tool this year was, um, was a, a good tool for that way school committee, and that way you organize the information, uh, middle back to what I mentioned, and that's leading to the, everything really doing, everybody was saying things for them. I was just wanting to point out that for your personnel, if you hire a superintendent, it'll be awesome. Or I think the superintendent, he gave a lot.
Um, yeah, that, that would be a question, I, I think, um way I'm watching for it, it seems to indicate that we're actually part of something other than that, oh, you think these people are fabulous. I agree, um, so, okay, next time, we were, um, I got this from the resident of the mass, locked up.
You have a comment, you're just fine, I'm like, so, I think it would be very advantageous to invest our agendas, so that you can think about, for office level covers and public good as well, it would be very wonderful. And we can also hopefully get the policy.
I deal with that, should be one document, so that's a good question. But, uh, we want the documents, we're still wanting to, the forms, and the things aren't derived on computers, and, you know, this is, it's not a weapon. File that one to the year, the right of the exist, so, we'll get you guys, um, but actually, this city council has to pass this thing. And, uh, and there's new work, as far as, um, agendas, when, um, the young, together often together, in their set. I don't know what she knows, that's, I can do that, but enough of the, we round the house. She doesn't know, I think, uh, the, uh.
We can, I think we can be moved, and I know we are looking at, you spend um, with your program, and some lots, and spend a lot of time working at the works, like making a lot easier, use of spending the payments, uh, you realize, so a lot of work is going into our technology.
Okay, um. Uh, moving on, fundraising. I don't have that, the send comments, and we were doing five this first time, then you have, I mean, the second. We were, but then we ended up not being to meet till Thursday. Uh, and it was just, I mean, if you want to table that, it's, it's probably a couple of things that are happening right now, that I want to do with us, um, just to be clear on how the process is. Um, this one of the most.
I have an issue, you know, papers that they don't, I think, be here, um, but people on Thursday, the people that are able to be audience. We need to talk to every guy. Do we have any policies that we didn't have that with us?
But we're gonna table this, I'm not, there's, I think, you know, it's, it's, right? No, I, it was just more questions, um. I don't know, but there was some questions, I like, this list, I was under the impression that we were supposed to see this for fundraisers happen. Uh, P T O, or the A F, or
the policy is written so that big companies, all, uh, all fundraisers over the summer, and then all spring fundraisers in January, before they start.
Um, or is it July day, or something?
Yeah, so the, the question, the question from committees is necessarily moving the fundraisers, because though they're already either done or in motion. Uh, the bigger these becomes, like, I would say, why, one of the things that fundraising policy tried to address is why are they collecting so much money? It's, it's, it's a lot of, I mean, the, the P T O is one thing, is that's a huge organization. But their individual sports teams to be raising five and ten thousand dollars. Seems, and this is on top of these, parents are paying. Because we all know, and with evidence of it this time, before teams get fundraisers, parents go on Facebook. Parents put their emails in fact, parents were required, players were required to send certain amounts of emails in to be solicited from the fundraisers. And all of those things, the sort of things that we were not so excited about, when we looked at fundraising policy. The question becomes, is this really the sort of thing we want our activities better funded with? Do we really need the things that the fundraiser provide? Are the sports fees the parents are already paying not enough? Because now they're gonna pay the fees, and they're gonna be contributing to the fundraisers. So, there's all three of all the questions about elements that the fundraising policy is supposed to bring up. Although we do this, it sounds it, it just seems like a lot of money.
Like, uh, policy, uh, policy, that school committee, finding maybe one, or possibly, I didn't do that.
But then we asked the superintendent to But then we asked the superintendent to use expression about. I love. Type of things that fundraisers are asking, are asking students to do very much. And then we look on raising and that sort of thing. You know, just example, the girls soccer team raising five thousand dollars to buy our singing balls. Should we be budgeting for that? We budgeting for the JV uniforms? You know, everything, three or four hundred dollars to play. And on top of that, there's a budget that we approved. And on top of that, they'd also need to fundraise an extra five thousand dollars. It seems like something's off.
Is I, I think we can discuss this data, our fifth month, but however, I like using these and what parents are paying, really funding our athletic programs or not requesting. Um, additional funding to run our program. I think the funding that the boosters. You know, coaches that are going through the student activity funds is above and beyond, um, what we're providing. Uh, during the, you know, each sport team or fall winter sprint. So. I know Mr. Fullail and myself are getting more information about from speaking. With our athletic director, so the user fees. Um, that we're collecting along with the operational, are you covers our transportation officials, coaches. Um, uniforms, the quality of equipment, um, so the. If you made the, the fundraising that's going, above and beyond. So that's the breakout banquets, that's the trophies. All of those things that we need to do. So. Um, I think the fifth month will be able to provide all the details, uh, regarding the fundraising. Uh, and a lot of it also is, is not just athletics. I mean, it's all our different clubs. That we have on music programs. Really, I think the fundraising that goes on to the student activities. We're doing enhancing those programs beyond the operational level and the detail. So. Um, because this has been important, any topic for us and having a new business manager. Um, we're currently going through everything.
Like I'm just Gallagher, um, I didn't probably move it as, so maybe these have to be reworded because. Soccer, for example, has five, six, that says all that it's our goals, training, coaching, ladder, don't use cones, pennies. I would definitely go to give more money to the athletic department in the budget if we, and those things are needed to. And a, and a, like a base in JV two uniforms. Is that a secondary uniform or are they just going, you know, with no shorts? Uh, the normal fee that they pay play. Well, again, we'll, we'll go into the weeds on. I think that's still. And all the well is going on because we should rewrite that to request what we figure out. On Thursday, you know, details and policy development. Uh, your meeting agenda.
Yeah, I think there's a, there's so many themes and a lot of different ways that, you know, that's why I wanted to adapt these. And the specifically, uh, um, the school department is purchasing uniforms, um, but there's also. Other boosters that provide donations, spare uniforms, so we're kind of like all that information together. Piece is, we're talking like, for example, enhancement of program. So some of that funding, let's say I was coaching girls soccer and I wanted to create a teacher program. You know, I'm saying, I'm coaching at the high school level. I'm giving up, let's say, uh, bowls or soccer nets. But I once started, I could probably say the middle school or even the elementary had need additional. Um, soccer nets, for example, to bring the program down to the lower levels. That's some of the equipment. Um, and that's that enhancement piece that I, that I was talking about. So until the music program. Wined by the staging, staging lights or things like that to enhance the program. So these are the things that I think we need more in discussion with, uh, our athletic director, we want, we must work, you know, here when we figure out. Have a little bit of that. But, um, there's just so many moving parts to this and so many different programs. Um, the good news is all the programs that we do have, um, other than booster helps. We run through our student activities, um, which means we feel, we're happy because that's all. Being appropriately do national law, how the funding should go for us to make it running. I just think we need a lot, a little more detail, take a little bit of the, to provide more information to school committees.
Well, I'm just gonna say. That's, I just gather that, now if you take these spin on discussions are important because I know. Pirates have brought out. Our sports, we need to have a much clearer, bigger hit of. Because I know there's also organizations, especially with sports at that level. I don't know what's happening. I'm just curious about that. Yeah, so. We made that workout with both. Funders that's spending them and. Who does it very often? That's some of my information, but I, I would.
Okay, um, so now beginning, um, one of the. Um, then, would he even retire because he had set up a winter.
I'm not sure.
That's what he wanted for. I didn't know where that county is.
The routine, um, foundation, which was established by the New York Port Bank when he retired.
Just two more points that we had talked about last year. One, or actually, we brought one up that the connection between. Fin column policy was gonna be important as we, uh, flesh up. The fundraising of yours, but. The other thing that we talked about were maybe letting parents know in advance. That the three or one always the thing, join the sport. Might also include, but might also be a uniform fee or something like that to come. People have idea. Um, I know we also talked about this when it comes to field trips, but there has to be a way of. Helping people who aren't just gonna keep. Writing checks left and right. This is another thing we talked about, we're gonna. Continue to raise the money to toss the place forward. Um, and finally, we talked about. The amount of money we're fundraising in the district. I wonder if there's a charitable side to that as well that comes to you close. Right now, it is to raise money for themselves. Some of their fans and Facebook programs for that, but. That happens to be. There's that plus and think about. The fundraising for the, for the community and that sort of thing. That's one of the, yeah, the media rolling towards that sort of thing, making everybody think they're ever playing. But just my.
I guess, I just want to add that there's been a lot of activity for us in that area. Just look at the long walk to water and the students who, um. Talking to the kids in the little school and the dance, we want to raise enough money to. So our kids are doing a lot in this area too. So I just wanted to point that out. It's not just that they're learning about fundraising for themselves or individuals. What did students, what did their veterans or. The twelve years moving, you know, hard more. So I think we are, we are still doing a nice job of creating. My apologies, but it's a bit hard to, to understand. On the other, uh, it just seems like. Thank you. I appreciate you. Okay, here we go. Um, I know we were, we're gonna talk, I think it was, uh, we can. That the gentleman, we can.
No, it's a title.
Yes.
Okay. Um, but I think in there and looking at some of the past. I guess some of the past agenda items. Um. I think it was like stupid handbooks, um, there and centering off the work. And I sent your office team, we've kind of taken a look at this, um. We're currently looking back, I think, at the past several years for agendas. Uh, in development, uh, new very poor public school kind of like, especially to today that allows like some flexibility. Any issues that may arise, but also plan on discussing that annually. Uh, very similar to the document that we all have is ensures that all topics are addressed in the time of discussion. Uh, but for example, like a student handbook, um. Process, it's usually done in spring. Um, and with, I mean, instead that gives time, um, you know, for the. Uh, school councils to review the student handbook. It also gives time, right now we have our attorneys looking at. Um, updating all our student handbook. So we're applying to all federal and state mandates, um, especially with some of the changes that kind of line. And basically, so that type of agenda would be something that would be annually, usually done April or May. And there were final approval typically in June. And then the old days, I'm not sure if we still do this, but then I would go off to print. Then the students would get their student handbook. So. And then any item like that is usually typically done in the spring. Um, so I just wanted to touch base. So currently we have our attorneys looking at, um, the bullying policy, discrimination. Special education laws, the new title line law, um, and we write in all of our student books to reflect the kind of state federal mandates. And then that's how, um, the school committee policy through, um, yard association. It just reflects that what is in the student handbook represents current law and current practices, uh, through the policies. The procedures and the, um, day to day operations is typically done through the district. But throughout, um, the state mandates that we're making on the. That was just one example. Um, and I know policies looking at, uh, the general items that come up annually per month. Um, but also our central office team is working on that too. So we really love that idea. Of each month will be in the topics, but also give us the flexibility to address concerns. Um, and then what we want to do is we're looking back at our own agendas over the last, uh, five years. So then we can develop a template that reflects that. But this is a great starting point. Um, of this document that we're all. It's familiar with.
Yes.
So the old one was the MSBA building updates.
Yeah, we're two. There's a little bit that we're out there.
Um, just to go through just a couple of pieces of COVID nineteen updates. Um, as you all know, we've been meeting on that advisory team. Beginning in July and we've been meeting on Wednesdays. Um, we continue lines of both cases in school and also, um, out of school. And we established our COVID nineteen dashboard, which we, we honestly think would be to do. Um, but we have had cases, so that's on our website. So parents and families can look at, um, current cases in the city and also in schools. We continue to win gas as we talk about, um, with our policy indoors. And that's helped, has already helped us throughout this four year. We've had, uh, positive cases come into the school. We, um. Did our regular protocol, we, um, utilize our close contacts, but since everyone's wearing masks. Uh, during the school day, um, we did not have an in-school spread at this time. We also had the testing protocols that we mentioned. Um, stay, stay in test protocol and then systematic protocol, uh, nurse stations, most of the desire set. You can do the rapid test right there. There's, uh, I checked in with my, uh, the fourth school committee, with my colleague, superintendents, and I asked if they heard any information. Through the D E S C, um, we got a mandated update that's, we're supposed to have a rule very soon because October is coming quick. And surprisingly, no one's turning. So. Only a couple of weeks away. So September thirty, maybe we'll get the news. Um, the good news is talking, um, uh, we nurse, uh, Warren McDonald, um. They are moving forward, from my understanding, uh, with the vaccination for twelve and under. Um, and they're anticipating, this is, you know, right now, this I guess rumor bill or through medical fashion. Um, that by October thirty first, those vaccinations, um, will start to ease and she's working. When that happens, I'm setting up a plank, um, for the, for the new board. So. That's all the good news is, you know, as we're moving forward, um, with that. The other good news is, um, we've had all of our faculty reply. Um, not all, we're very close to one percent of, um, the faculty were around thirty. Um, people have not, uh, replied at this time. Um, so we're still working on that, but right now, um. We're looking at ninety eight to ninety nine percent of faculty being fully vaccinated, um. And that's assuming that those thirty are not, which we don't want to make that assumption, uh, or even if I was engaged, we'd still be about ninety percent. So. Uh, I'm just really proud of our district, our educators, our support staff, our nutrition team. Getting word out, um, and I mean, as I said, over ninety percent of all of those mandates. Yes. Yes.
I present. Probably. Great, I read, uh, and then, uh, policy. A lot of research, you know, which is able to. That's who must say. Okay, and we have. Going to get games. But we ensure access. Didn't make.
I think that's what we had done.
I mean, I, I don't have the exact numbers, but I want to say it was well over fifty, uh, additional students. Uh, came home for that first. For the vaccination and we're working on getting student data, because it's self-acting all at once. Um, so we should have some numbers, percentages on the student data, but I think a lot of students. That need that age requirement, um, of, you know, all of them out. To begin to.
I was actually talking to our, the openers today about should this. Get approved, then we need to do so, we already been marketing the brand. This whole vaccine and misinformation. We're working Massachusetts, even though my cases arise. But, um, certainly we need to work with schools and to learn, especially did a great job with each of all. Um, but it's, you need to do that.
And our nursing staff is, you know, with all the organization, I mean, they've done, they've been credible. But they're also very versatile, so when parents do have any questions. We got the vaccination or anything, you know, we got a little, you know, the child. And discussions, confidence or discussions with us. And then last but not least, we can actually talk. We're instructed in this essence, I were all. Um, just an update on our early release, um. And Superintendent Boleo and I, a moment, uh, other, uh, central office teams went out, um, and then general focus for each school. The revenue end with the literacy focus, uh, throughout the day, with my new training and do special education workshops. Um, regarding our D cap and then also some restraint training. Uh, our lone team literacy focus, uh, keys to literacy and then also trauma sensitive strategies. Uh, for our staff. And remember the, um, principal philosophy, the training facility in terms of charging along with, um, James Sapolsky. He's also a training facility, and we're going to continue that, we need rest staff throughout the district. Their expertise, and it's a perfect time for that, especially as many students. In school. Uh, I know, we did vertical written one, um, and then some B S L, B L L training. And then we also worked with our teachers, you know, educators on goal setting for this school year. And then the high schools focused on essential partners, constructive dialogue skill train in every content area. And the role of that is teaching of those skills will be in the advisory. Person, and then that will allow the entire faculty to utilize the constructive dialogue in class. With. You know, all content areas with our students. They also had some time to use some common planning time toward the end. And then also work with the language department, really switch to talk. So we were agreeing, um, early release day, uh, to be tied district and a lot of, we think that. For watching.
There are ninety-five.
We have a number of ten, twelve, and I think. Yes, we're working on that because, uh, that's a little more difficult yet, especially with collecting the forms. Um, and then off the launch, it's eight days, um, so we definitely have that information for our next school. We're utilizing our, uh, six map program, which has a medical. And you know, it's all highly confidential, we don't share, we have information, we don't think we can share percentages. Um, of the students, so none of that information is shared. Where, I think it's promising, I know the last time before we started school, we were figuring where, you know, we. We would send back. Uh, but we have a lot of data, and so we should have.
And we're going to. So.
Many, uh, students that we have, Ireland. I want to say from first time in school. And this is just the beginning stages, I think the high school did it from forty percent, forty-five percent. And I think the middle school. At the high sixties, uh, sixty, eighty, sixty, around, those are the estimates, you know. But I think that was a great starting point for us, um, with the word getting out and then also having the vaccination clinic here, and I mean, it's also. So. Uh, Ms. McDonald will have the accurate numbers.
And it's one of the things that in the middle school, that many wants to correct, so that can be part of the.
So we were looking at, so. I think the cities. Imagine with these. Not all of the. But it's.
I think I put the professor's name, so. Just really good. I'm really, really proud of. Taking the day to tonight. Um, yeah, I just wanted to say. Let's run. Let's go to our next. Have a special point in the. My mother. Best, but I mean. Double date. I see. Better than you were. Three days, whatever it is. So. After month, probably. Or. It's fast, I would say. Probably not. Actually, we better. Finally, still. If the money that I asked for. Father. Good. I think. Let me. After you. Our project is all. If I can see. One, two, one, two. Like a big report, uh. And that brings up into business, actually, um, before, uh, we have a form. The medical team have been not, this is thirty, uh. Late of our center meeting here, uh, there will be, I believe, most of them. You know, we can't lumble yet, uh. Soon, a lot of will be remote. Of course, uh. And. Um, and it may be a man, he may, so. We'll reform, uh, on the district website side. Again, so. Will be options, uh, it'll be anonymous, the total, you know, it's, you know, one of the reasons that. Lots of same question. That have you and, uh, this is for long here. Uh, Ms. Burlong has been awesome in terms of getting the middle school all set up for me. All the time, so she's gonna be having all. Totally showing up, right, and a lot of work, right away, awesome. Um. Something you guys are gonna be having. Yeah, it's Monday, I'm hoping for, um, we have a title, we have the medical team. Or. Um. I feel like. By screen that. Okay, there you go. Uh, so the school committee will be in the audience, all of the audience, um. I will be on stage, uh, writing questions off cards, emcee, um, and then we will, during that part of the evening, have. A very short, personal warning, warrants and. We ended up for the evening, so tell all your friends not to be, not to go to the six thirty on Monday. But, and we, this is a email, well, with the form, uh. I'll finish this week.
First, we want on that, a few.
As we write a number down, I still. Other than this, the. Um, I was under the impression that these state laws, the. October version. And then they were very cute. So. Yeah. I know we should never be talking about our best policy of, you know, the reports. Well, I think it's a great, depending on what happens. I don't know. Okay, but as it stands, are we allowed to vote? Without that.